Hey everybody, I'm getting ready to do the show. And let me tell you something, I've got to admit something to you. This is not going to be an easy show for me to do. The last thing that I ever want to do on television is give a one-hour platform to a bunch of racists. Especially young kids who are racist. But I was talking with my producers today before we did this show, and we thought it was important to do because all of us need to keep our fingers on the pulse of racism. It seems every time we pick up a newspaper, we're reading another story about racism, intolerance, some kind of ism. Whether it's black churches being bombed, or Mexican immigrants being beaten up coming over the border, or even Marlon Brando making that statement that upset the Jewish community. It just seems that all of us in some way or another are touched by racism and intolerance. You know, I can remember being four years old, growing up in North Carolina. And I remember I was in kindergarten. And we were really excited because we were going to go to this country club and go for a big picnic, and all the little kids were excited, and we were happy, and it was spring, and I ran home and I couldn't wait to go. The day of the picnic, my mother and father decided that I wasn't going to go. We were going to go visit my grandmother instead, and you can imagine how upset I was about that. It wasn't until I was 16-years-old that my mother and father sat me down and explained to me why little Rolanda couldn't go to that picnic. You see, I had come home one day with a note pinned to my little jacket. And it said, "Yes, we're having a picnic, but Rolanda can't go because they don't allow blacks in this country club." I pray that no other children have to go through that. That's why I'm going to do the show today. Let me introduce to you someone that I have met who is a very interesting man. His name is Johnny Lee Clary. And Johnny, a lot of people are going to freak out when they understand that you are the former imperial wizard of the Ku Klux Klan. Now Johnny claims that he's a changed man now, he's not a racist anymore. And Johnny, you say that you're going to deal with some of these kids out there, some of these kids who are so racist, so bigoted. You can change people, can you really do that?
Well, I can't change them, but the Lord Jesus Christ can change them. You know hatred stirs up dissension, but love covers all wrongs. Hatred is a learned response, you're not born with hate, you have to be taught it. And the best way to overcome an enemy is to make a friend out of him.
Well, I'm not going to let anybody judge you today. We're going to try to keep an open mind, because I'm going to tell you, we'll be back in a minute. We've got some kids out here, you're going to hear things that you do not agree with today. You're going to hear things that you totally agree with today. But let's try to have an open mind as we're talking to young people, to teenagers who are dealing with their own issues about race relations in America. All this week, we're talking about teenagers and the things that they're thinking about, the things that are important to them. And as we enter into this new day, I think all of us want to know, what are our kids going to do about hate? Our first guests say they don't care what Johnny said backstage. They say they're never going to change their racist ways of thinking. These young people say that blacks, Mexicans, Jews, anybody who is not white should get out of America and make this a white homeland. I want you to meet 22-year-old Jeff. He's a leader of a group called the National Socialist Movement. He is joined by 17-year-old group member Bob. Guys, I gotta tell you, I don't really want to meet folks like you. But I'm going to take this chance to meet you, just so I understand where you're coming from. I have to admit, I look at you, you're so young, it breaks my heart to think that you might be filled with so much hatred. Why? How'd you get involved in a group like this?
Well, let me tell you, it's not hatred, it's love for our own people, love for our own race. You have all these other races, and they can have Black Pride, Black Power, Jew Power, et cetera, et cetera. But anytime a white person is to stand up and say, "You know, I'm proud of being white." You know, "We're shot down," and say, "Oh, he's a racist," this and that.
But Jeff, if I'm to stand up and say, "Black Power," or "I love my people too," I'm not saying kick out everybody else out of America.
I'm not saying necessarily that we need to kick everyone out of America. We need a white homeland. And no matter what happens, we're going to have that white homeland, any means necessary.
Bob, does that mean kicking people who look like me out of a homeland that my ancestors and my relatives helped build?
Well, they all, uh, we have our own, we want our own homeland, we just want a section of the country, and that's it. You know, you can have whatever else you want, you know, we just want a section.
But what if you want my section, where my house is? Does that mean that you're going to kick me out of my own homeland?
There'll be white people in your section that'll have to come to our section. So, we'll do whatever we have to.
We'll split the country up, it doesn't matter. You know, a lot of times people will say, "Oh, why don't you go back to Europe?" Well, we can't go back to Europe. There's no, it's overrun, it's overrun, just like it is. Here, you look at your audience, we're filled with, you have a multiracial cesspool here in New York City. And just to get back, to get back on Johnny Lee Clary's subject, I want to say something about Johnny Lee. He's a racial traitor. He came into the movement a while back, and now he's basically saying that he doesn't believe in it anymore. Well, he probably never believed in it in the first place. He is a white racial traitor, he was, I don't know, he probably sold his race out for a bag of nickels.
Well, this is the type of discussion we're going to have today, folks. What all of us, what can we do to tackle, talk like this? Johnny's got a few things to say to you too. He says he can come out here and change you boys. We're going to see what you have to say about him. Tackling intolerance and racism in America, can we do it? Stick around for this heated debate.
White Power! White Power! Stick out!
Oh, it really scares me. I'm so proud of this country, I am so proud to be an American, I love this country, I kiss the ground of this country. But it frightens me, it brings tears to my eyes, to talk with people like we're talking to now, 22-years-old and another teenager here. Bob, how old are you?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And Bob is in disguise, by the way, not because he's embarrassed or ashamed of being a racist, but because he's a minor, and on television, we have to cover his image. These two young men say they are darn proud of being racist as young as they are. They say that blacks and Jews and anybody of color who is not white needs to get out of their way, because they say America ought to be a white homeland. How in the world did you guys get involved in an organization that would make you so proudly display swastikas that mean death and destruction to so many people in the world?
It was not a choice, it was something that we had to do. This country's turning into a sewer. I don't like this country for what it is today. I can't say that I'm going to have a job as good as my parents and my grandparents had, and any other white person is pretty much in the same boat.
Why?
Because the country's being overrun by immigrants. We've got the mud flood coming across the border from Mexico.
And what's the mud flood? Mexicans, is that what you call Mexican immigration, mud floods?
Yup.
Okay.
The mud flood is coming across our borders, taking our jobs.
Have you ever met a Mexican person?
Sure, I live in a ghetto.
Have to deal with them every day.
Every day, all night long.
Get harassed, attacked, everywhere we go.
Uh-huh. Bob, let me ask you, at 17-years-old, what was the day that you decided, you know, "I could join a whole bunch of other groups at 17-years-old, but you know, for me, I'm going to join a group that doesn't like anybody but white folks." What made you decide, Bob? What was it in your life that made you sign up?
When I was 14, I was going to middle school, and I started noticing all the Jews around me, the blacks around me, how they're getting special privileges. And I just got sick and tired of it, I couldn't take it anymore. I just, I had to do something for our race before it dies out. It's going to die out soon.
That brings up a very good question, affirmative action thing. They say that affirmative action was made for the minorities to get special privileges, special jobs, and all this kind of stuff. All right, well, you look around in New York City, the white people are the vast minority here, as in our area of where we live in St. Paul. And why is there still affirmative action? It's a big joke. It's a big, it's to spit on the white race.
So why don't you do something constructive, like learning to vote and being part of a government movement to bring up another voice as opposed to hating people?
We're part of a government movement. We're for a new government, national socialist government.
Not my government. Not my government. Let me tell you, we've got, earlier in the show, we met Johnny Lee Clary, who's the former imperial wizard of the Ku Klux Klan. He says he's changed his ways, he is no longer a racist, and he believes he can take the two of you and turn your lives around, get rid of this racist attitude. Do you believe that he can do that?
Hell, no.
No way.
Wait a minute, who's this man down here in the hood saying, "Heck, no"? You don't like him either. He said he was a traitor to the white race, is that what you think too? Come on, stand up, what's your name?
William Nathan McKinnney.
Mm-hmm. What's your name?
William Nathan McKinnney.
Okay, and you represent what group?
Rebels Nice and Ku Klux Klan.
The Ku Klux Klan?
Yes, ma'am.
And sir, you don't believe that Jimmy could change somebody like you?
Hell, no.
Mm-hmm. Are you, I guess you're proud to see young people like this?
Yes, ma'am, I sure am.
Why?
Because I was born in a white race, I'll die in a white race, and that's the way it is.
And I love you because you're just a good person, maybe, and it doesn't have anything to do with you being white. So why can't you give that back to me?
Because, I tell you, everybody should stick with their own kind. Blacks should stick with black, whites should stick with white.
I can't tell you how many good friends I wouldn't have if I took your advice.
Yeah, but what you going to do with them little niggas running right here, like old days?
Oh, no, 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 no. Now listen, one of the things, one of the things I'm real proud of myself of is that no matter what you throw at me, I'm still going to love you. There's nothing you can do to me to make me hate you, nothing, nothing. I love you, sir. I love you, sir. And all I ask, all I ask is that you respect people, because we're in people's homes now.
I don't hate you.
Okay, but don't say words that would degrade the people I come from, okay?
The point is, I don't hate, I don't hate black. The point is, they should stay with their own kind.
Jimmy Lee, you listening back there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm listening.
What do you say to this man? You say you can change him.
Well, I'm not saying I can change this man here, I mean, he, uh...
Look up there in the monitor.
You know, the youth of today will decide what kind of nation that we live in tomorrow. And I would hate to think, I want these young, this is a perfect example, Rolanda, Rolanda, I want these young people...
Okay, wait, wait, we want to hear, we want to hear, sit down for a second. Well, I want to hear, Jimmy, what do you say to this guy?
Rolanda, I want these young people on the stage to take a look at this man sitting down there doing all the mouthing, and see that's what their future could be like if they continue in this course that they're in.
Bob, Jeff, what do you say to Jimmy who says that he, Johnny, I mean, Johnny, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused calling you Jimmy. Johnny, what do you say to these young folks here who don't believe, who call you a traitor, basically, to the white race?
Rolanda, they don't understand what I've been through, but I'll tell you what, I've been where they've been. And if I was where they was at now, I would probably be saying the same thing. But these are not, you see, Rolanda, these are not bad kids, these are misguided kids.
One more time, sir, one more time, I'll come let you give your position, but let me, let me hear what Johnny's saying. What'd you say, Johnny?
Rolanda, these are not bad young men up there, these are misguided young men that's been misguided because of guys sitting down there on the front row, guys like that. And these kids could turn around, they could contribute something to society, because these two boys sitting on the stage, they're not dummies, they've got brains, and they could turn around and turn their lives around and do something positive for all races in America.
The only thing we're going to be doing is turning this country around, and people traitors like Johnny Lee Clary are going to get caught in the crossfire.
What do you say, sir?
I'd just like to ask the gentleman, what do you hope to gain by having so much hatred towards people that you don't even know?
It's not hatred, like I clarified earlier in the show. We want a place for our own people, we love our race as you should love your race. Is there, there should be no problem with that, right?
You keep saying your race, the white race. No, there is no pure race, whether it's white, black, everybody is mixed with something.
No.
Somewhere down the road. We're going to come back in a minute, we've got to take a quick break for a commercial, but I'm going to ask the question, why is this 20-year-old mother trying to teach her two-year-old baby daughter how to be a racist? And whatever happened to this racist who stood up in the Rolanda audience? Did he, like Clary, maybe change his racist ways? Maybe you remember Gordon.
Black Power, White Power, we all bleed the same, okay? Yes, I am, and I'm proud to be gay, honey. I am proud to be gay!
You're not white either, because your hair is blond and your eyes aren't blue, man, so why...
Let's hear what Gordon has to say.
You know, we're hearing all this stuff, you know, poor little innocent nigger. Well, I'm going to tell you something.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. We're in my studio, which is like my living room. And there are no H-words, there are no N-words, there's no disrespect for people here. If you were to call the organization that Jeff and Bob belong to, the National Socialist Party, that believes America should be a white homeland, and anybody who's not white ought to get out of their way, this is the voicemail that you might hear if you call. This is their message on their machine, let's play that.
You have reached the National Socialist Movement. We will be judge, jury, and executioner. Your future and your children's future is on the line. It's time to enlist in the fight for a white homeland.
Do your parents agree with what you're doing?
I'm not going to talk about my parents, no, they don't agree with it.
They don't?
No.
I bet they're ashamed.
If a person should be ashamed of another person for being proud of their race, then there's a problem.
Bob, what do your parents say?
They're against it, but they let me do my own thing, you know? They understand what I'm doing, and they let me do it.
See, what I'd like to, what I'd like to say, you know, is, you know, you're going to, you always single us out, all the talk shows always do this kind of stuff.
I'm not like all the talk shows, sir.
No, let me finish. They make us, they make us look like haters and all this kind of stuff, when you've got people from every race that are proud of their people, that want to stand up and do something about it. And that's all we're doing. And, you know, you try to make us look bad, say that everything...
I think you make yourself look bad. I'm not doing anything to make you look bad, I think that's on you, sir.
I just wanted to point out, before you kept referring to Johnny as a traitor, perhaps he just woke up, and maybe soon you'll do the same.
When I listened to your message, you said you would be the executionist. Well, my husband survived a group of executionists called Nazis. So I would suggest if you want to execute anybody, start with yourselves.
The Holocaust was a hoax, a hoax. It was a big lie, and you know it. It was a Hollywood hoax. We've got all the figures.
I'm a reporter on a teen national TV show called In the Mix, and I interview teens every day. I think what we're seeing here is two teens who are looking out to be loved, and I think that's a big problem in this country. We see, no, seriously, I think we're seeing gang activity because their kids are not being cared for.
If you believe that, what can we do for teenagers like that, who you believe are so misguided by a lack of love?
Really, unfortunately, I don't see any hope for them. I think what we need to do, the reason why we have teen gangs and we have people like this is because they're young people who are not getting the care and the support in their homes that they need, so they find these organizations that tell them they're great and we love them.
You misunderstand, we are going to stomp out gang activity, we are going to stomp out drug users, abortion, all these terrible things that are destroying this country. We're going to stomp them out.
Go on.
I got a question. You said that you want to go where it's only your race, and you want to actually kick everyone out of New York City because it's a sewer. Why won't you just go into the middle of the country where it is all your race and make it a lot easier for yourselves?
That's the plan, that's the plan.
I'm going to go Montana.
You know, the Northwestern narrative. You can have New York City, New York City is beyond law.
It's over, it's gone.
It's gone. We want a white homeland, it doesn't matter where it is.
Well, like, in the Declaration of Independence, it says that there's people with liberty and justice for all. If you want to kick people out of, like, where they're living, they have a right to be there, they have a right to think their own things, they have a right to go about their own business, why do you think that you can just come in and just push them out the places they grew up with?
Don't we have a right to live in a white, safe place?
You don't have a right to push them out.
Where we can walk down the street without getting mugged and shot by these savages and these gang members? I don't have white people, I haven't, I haven't had white people attack me for walking down the street, but the minorities will. And a woman cannot walk the street...
What's that, sir? Come on, come on, come on. Wait, wait, what's that?
I got a comment for you. I'm black, and I'm with a white girl. And you say you want to separate things like that? I wouldn't have this if it were in your way.
That's right.
That's right, and this is what I have, this is what I live for.
If you want to, if you want to go live in your own country, away from us, and do your race-mixing thing, whatever you want to do, that's fine by us, but we want a country of our own. Where is it? Where is it? How can we go there?
You know, he mentioned that he lives in, he wants to live in a place where a white person can walk down the street, or he lives in a place where white people walk down the street and get mugged, get shot at by all these minorities. He wants, but when he goes to a white neighborhood, that doesn't happen to him.
No, it doesn't.
Well, I think if you came to my white neighborhood dressed like that, it might happen 10 times as much as it happens in these minorities. Because, I just want to say another thing. I do respect, I do respect that he wants this promised land of his own, because we all want our own promised land. But if you're, if you want a white, a white promised...
Are you sure you're white, though? Are you Jewish or are you white?
What color is my skin?
No, I think, no, you're Jewish, sure.
What color is my skin?
No, you're Jewish.
What color is my skin? Answer that question for me.
The devil, the seed of Cain, it says so in the Bible.
Okay, that's fine by you. But what color is my skin?
Green.
Oh, it's green? Okay, well, then you need, you need glasses or something, okay? Because I am white, okay? It's on my birth certificate.
Let me ask you this, as a white man, listening to a young white man talking about this type of thing, what does that do to you?
Makes me feel pathetic inside and kind of nauseous, because, you know, these are two young men with a lot of energy, and you can see that if it was just turned around and put in the right direction, they could really do a lot of creative things in this world. I'm also an angry quote-unquote white man. It hasn't been easy for me. I'm married, I have two kids, I've had more peaks and valleys in my life than the Rocky Mountains. But you know what? I don't wake up in the morning and say, "God, because that person got the job instead of me, or because I got fired, or because of this, I'm going to pick up a gun or wear a swastika and provoke this type of insinuation that I'm going to liberate the white people to this extreme." If you want to be white and you want to find this homeland yourself, that's fine. But what you're indicating by just your outfit alone with the swastika is, you're not just looking to love the white people, you're looking to hate everyone around you, because that's what that swastika symbolizes. That's number one.
You don't even know us, how do you know?
Number two is, I'm just curious to know...
You're prejudging me, you're prejudging me.
Because I do respect what you're saying in regards to you want a white homeland. That's a beautiful thing, and I, and I hope it happens for you, but not in the way that you're construing it. But I just want to ask you a question or two. When you were a child, were you a...
Wait, let me take, let me take a break, let me take a break. He's so good, I don't want him to stop. But let's take a quick break, real quick. Also, you know, as young girls, many of us started joining social clubs around the age of 10-years-old, you know, things like the Girl Scouts and the 4-H Club, and maybe even the Little League. But at the age of 10, our next guest joined the Ku Klux Klan. Now she's all grown up, she's 20-years-old, she's raising her two-year-old daughter, who wore her first KKK robe at only one month old. We're going to meet Wendy and her little daughter Ashlyn right after this. Quite a heated debate going on here for sure, and one that's well worth it, at least I think. Before we meet Wendy, who I was telling you about, who's raising her two-year-old daughter Ashlyn to hate, I guess, who put her little baby at one-month-old in her first KKK outfit, before we talk to Wendy, I wanted this gentleman to ask his question that you weren't going to ask before the break.
Right, well, one thing I'd like to start out saying is, the gentleman in the black cap down here in the front row stood up before and said, "I was born white and I want to die white." Well, I can guarantee you, sir, you will. Okay? I just want to, just want to let you know that, okay? Okay? Just want to let you know that you will, okay? And you know what? I was born a Jew, and I'm going to die a Jew, and I'm proud of that too, okay? But a white Jew, not a green Jew, excuse me, okay?
What was the question?
The question was, I was just curious, but please... Jeff, listen, I respect your views, I respect my views, okay? What I'd like to continue saying, the question, the question that I had was, I was just curious to know, and I can ask this to the young lady up there, as well as to the two gentlemen and the three down in the front row as well, were you people maybe abused as children?
No way, no way.
Or, or, seriously?
No, I'm being serious. Listen, listen, listen.
I grew up in a good... Middle-class family.
Let me answer the question. The whole, every time somebody comes up with an idea that's a little bit frightening, especially to the Jewish people, you have to be kooks, crazies, wackos, or child abusers? You're the child abusers and the child molesters, and you know it.
I'm just asking a simple question, I wanted an answer. If it was no, then I can accept that.
No, of course not.
Of course not. Yes, sir.
A woman mentioned before that we're all racially mixed, something that I do believe. And one thing I'm just curious, if, let's say you were in an accent that required a blood transfusion that saved your life, and...
I'd rather die than take it.
And you found out afterwards...
One more time, please.
And let's say you found out afterwards that the five pints that you received that saved your life, one came from someone who's Chinese, someone who's Spanish, someone who's black, whatever the religions. What would happen to you? Would you be now allowed, with that blood of all this interracial blood flowing through your veins, would you be allowed in your society that has all fenced in? Would you be allowed back into that group?
Because remember, there is a law that says that 135th rule, one drop of black blood, you're black.
I'd take my life. I couldn't live with the shame.
Thank you. But let's answer that question, because that, you know, because when it comes down to life and death, baby, the only thing you better see, if you need blood, is red. And I want to ask you, if you found out that that blood, and that's a great question, came from someone other than a non-white person, would you sit up there in your dying bed and operate in rem and say, "No"?
Yeah, of course.
Wendy's there shaking her head, she says she'd say no too. Wendy, you don't like people who aren't white, do you?
No.
I didn't, you know, you kind of made me feel kind of strange. I always come up on the Rolanda Show when I have guests, and go up and say, "Hi, how you doing? Welcome." You know, this is my home, I like to treat people as if this is my living room. Wendy wouldn't look me in the eye. Wendy wouldn't shake my hand. Wendy was very, very...
Wendy was raised that way.
Wendy was raised that way, you say. You're grandpa, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Come on, stand up, that's your grandbaby there, right?
Proud.
One-month-old, wore a KKK outfit.
Wide and proud, one-month-old.
Wide and proud.
One-month-old.
And you're proud of that?
Yes, ma'am, very proud.
Very proud. You're going to shape that little girl to hate when she's so full of love, I bet she is.
No.
Can't answer, can't? Wendy, why don't you answer for grandpa? Go on, Wendy, go on. No, I'm talking to Wendy now. I want to hear from Wendy. Wendy wouldn't talk to me, say hello, so I want to hear talk now. Go on, Wendy.
Um, I wouldn't take anybody, no, non-white blood, that would be the same as mixed.
So you would die?
Yes, I would. Just like Jehovah Witness won't have a blood transfusion, same thing. I will not take-
Sir, don't interrupt your grandchild, okay? Go on.
No, it's just like Jehovah Witness won't have a blood transfusion. I won't accept no blood that's non-white.
I guess it gave you a great deal of pride to dress up your little daughter at one month old in a KKK hood and, and robe.
Yes.
And, and what would you like to see happen to people like me in this nation? And talk to me, you know what we do on the Rolanda Show a lot? Look at me straight in the eye. And I want you to talk to me. Really, really. And, and you know something? And I respect whatever you say. Don't call me any words, any names. But I want you to look me in the eye and tell me, Rolanda, this is what I'd like to see happen to people who look like you.
Not necessarily I'd like anything to happen to you. I want to be separate. I want to be my own kind and improve my own race.
What will that mean for me?
Just like many black people have Black Power, Malcolm X. They want to improve their race and we want to improve ours.
Okay, I have no problem with that. Gung ho, do that. But what does that mean for me?
Well, that means that we don't want to be around black people. We don't want to be around anybody that's non-white.
So, does that mean that you'll move and go do your thing wherever you can and leave me alone?
If the government spent, split the United States in half and said, "This side wants, this side," the other half, I'd be more than glad.
Well, I'm going to fight every day to make sure my government doesn't do that. But in the meantime, I just wonder what that means for me and people who look like me, and people who don't look like me, who don't happen to be white. Is there some kind of movement, folks, that y'all want to, to do any type of harm? Do you want to do anything? I mean, suppose the place that you want to move to has people who are different than you. You're going to push them all out of their home?
Not if it was split in half. We want to be to ourselves, like we live now. We live in an all-white county, we're to ourselves. There's low crime in our county. It's not like up here, you don't, nobody gets murdered in our county if your husband has been-
People get murdered every place, ma'am.
Not in our county. Not in our county.
Wait, wait, I'll let you have a comment in a minute. I got to take a quick commercial break, now get back to you, grandpa. Coming up next, we're going to meet this young woman who says, "Don't hate her just because she's a skinhead." We'll have her explain that right after this. We'll be right back in a minute, folks, and I'll come to you. I'll come back to you. Let's meet somebody else now. Catherine is a skinhead. A culture she joined at the age of 13. But Catherine says she's not like most skinheads you hear about. What makes you different, Catherine?
Well, I'm a traditional skinhead. Skinhead really started out in Britain in the 1960s, in the late 60s. And it wasn't co-opted by the white power people until the mid to late 70s. It was originally, it evolved from the hard mod culture, and there was a lot of influence. We adopted, um, the, the dress of the West Indian immigrants, and we, we adopted their music, the ska, the skinhead reggae. So it was really largely based on black culture until the late 70s.
Isn't that ironic? I sure didn't know that. Wait a minute.
The original skinheads were anti-immigrants.
Wait a minute, wait, one time. And let me, let me point something else out here too. Notice that the seating arrangement has changed. Wendy didn't want to sit next to Catherine, and then Bob didn't want to sit, and it just switched all up here. Wendy, why didn't you want to sit next to Catherine?
I don't want to sit beside anybody that, that's a traitor, a race traitor.
A race traitor. Catherine, what do you say?
If I'm a white person, and I'm a normal, everyday white person, I don't agree with you. And yet, you believe that white people are the people, are the superior people, are the people who think straight. How can you justify the fact that I don't agree with what you're saying? I'm, I'm a race traitor, yet I'm your average, everyday white person.
White people are destroying our race.
Let Wendy answer, y'all. Wendy?
No, um, there is white people that's just as worse as the spics coming over the fly.
Watch your language, watch your language, watch your language.
So what you're saying is, you don't want a race, you don't want a world for white people? You want a world with small minority-
You look like a person that would breed with a black person, that's what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
And I wouldn't want to sit beside of you, no.
What, what are you saying?
You look like a person that would breed with a black person, and I'm not going to be beside of you.
My first question is for, for Jeff.
Jeff, question for you.
Um, I want to, I just want to understand, well, you read this in the Bible about Jews being the seed of the devil?
Yes.
Because Jesus Christ was a Jew.
No, wrong.
And so was his mother, okay?
Let me answer the question. I'll answer your question.
No, he was a Jew, okay? And if you read the Bible, he was celebrating Passover, the Last Supper, which is a Jewish tradition, okay?
No, let me answer it, let me answer it. Hey, 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 let me answer the question.
When you said before, you said before that you would accept black blood.
I'll answer your question. Let me answer her question first.
One minute, one minute, wait a minute.
Let me answer the question. Why, why are you-
Make it quick, make it quick.
Why do you ask questions if I can't answer?
Well, go quick.
Revelations 2:9, John 8:44, "The Jews are the synagogue of Satan." It says, rates on the Bible.
And you say what, sir?
When you said before that you would accept black blood, when you go get, when, um, suppose you're in the hospital and all this, they, they, it's not labeled, "White blood, black blood."
She said, "If I knew it was a white person's blood."
I'm not going to put up with this anymore. I've had it.
Oh, God bless.
As you see these guys sitting right here, there is, there is the reason why I got out of the Klan, because I don't want this to be my future.
Come on, y'all, sit down, sit down. It's a talk show, it's a talk show. This is not wrestling. It's a talk show. Sit down, sit down. Sit down. Let's speak one at a time, folks. Johnny, Johnny, you say the reason that you got out of the Ku Klux Klan and gave up your position as Imperial Wizard and changed your racist ways was because you didn't want to associate with people like these guys up here in the front row?
I didn't, because, you know, they, they claim to be the master race. Well, if that's the master race, I don't want to be a part of it. What I am today is, I defend my race. My race is the human race. I used to believe like these boys, but I did it out of ignorance and unbelief. And I, and I ask people to forgive me for the way that I treated people and for ever associating with people like that. But I want to see them change. These are not bad people, these are misguided people.
Let's talk about how you change your races. We'll be right back in a minute. See you, Johnny. We'll be back in a minute. I'll, I'll give you a chance, I promise, I'll give you- Okay, listen, y'all, we've had a little, little, little ruffling of feathers around here, folks, jumping out of their seats and things. Let's don't do that. Of course, there are things that upset me. Goodness knows, there's some things that I've heard you say, sir, I, I might jump up to. But that's not what this is about. We just want to sit up here and have a good conversation. I'm curious to know, Johnny Lee, what was it that made you get recruited in the first place and work your way up to the title of Imperial Wizard? That position you gave up and changed your ways? But what got you in there in the first place?
Because I needed attention. As a young man, I was looking to belong to something, and I wasn't getting attention at home. And I was looking to belong. I'd watched my father commit suicide, my mother was an alcoholic, I came from a broken home, and I needed somebody to, to come up and encourage me and tell me I could amount to something. And the Klan came along and said, "We'll be a family to you."
Kind of just like that young lady who's a reporter for teenage, for a teenage group. She says that that's, it's the lack of attention, love that makes gangs, clans-
It could have been the state, it could have been the gangs, it could have been anybody that gave me encouragement, and I would have went with them. And in this case, it was the Ku Klux.
So what made you decide to get out?
The love of a black man. He was a black preacher, he showed me, he told me, he looked, he looked me-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, quiet down. Let's watch our language, folks, let's watch our language. I think it's important for us to hear how, because, come on, let me tell you. There are a bunch of young kids in your organization who don't like being- Wait a minute, Gordon, Gordon, Johnny-
Do you want to turn out like these guys? Come on.
I don't have to, I'm like these guys.
You said you wasn't in the Klan anymore. You said, you said you weren't even in the Klan anymore.
I am not in the Klan, I am not in the skinheads. I'm trying to get an organization started.
Why don't you guys unify and work together? Why don't you guys unify and work together?
Look, Gordon, Gordon, Gordon. Now, you were on my show before, and you were disrespectful and all that other kind of stuff. We got that straight. But you hadn't changed a bit. Ah, that's what I was- Look, grandpa, you're going to wear me out before this show is over. Come on, sit back down. Go on, you haven't changed a bit. Quiet down, I want to hear Gordon.
You got some Klan organizations that don't want anything to do with the skinheads. You got some skinhead organizations that want to do any, don't want anything to do with the Klan. We've got to meet a middle ground where we work together, or we're never going to get anything done.
If you believe in white unity, why can't you guys all work together then?
That's what we're doing, we're doing it. We are working together. It's just race traitors like you that come into the organization and cause like the fire.
All right, now, I want to make, you guys call me a race traitor, but you said that people should have a right to, to decide how they want to go in life. You said that, right? Do you agree with what he said?
Well, I believe in segregation, if, but I don't believe in interracial marriages. That's not right. If God would want us to mix races, he'd make us all one.
He changed his mind since he was on our show before.
If you ever got into something and changed your mind, Ro. Do I have a right to change my mind on something I once believed?
If you wanted to just change your mind, why didn't you just go back in the closet where you belong? Why make it worse on yourself? We're coming to power, Johnny, we're coming to power.
You were going to win, and you know it.
Johnny, let me ask you that.
By blowing up those, those alleged suspects in Oklahoma City, they, they, they-
You mean the government, the FBI?
To the white supremacist group.
You mean the ATF?
Johnny, you claim that you could change a race. What could you do to make Wendy possibly change her ways?
Well, it's hard too with her family sitting here, you know, and stuff. But by herself, if I could talk to her, what I would point out, for one thing, Wendy, I'll just go ahead and say it in front of everybody. Wendy, you love your child?
Very much, because she's not keeping her wife.
If a car, would you care?
You're keeping her wife.
You said you don't want to get any black blood in her. You wouldn't let her have a black transfusion, right?
No.
What if Rolanda, if, if, if she seen a car going to hit, hit your baby-
I would save your child in a minute.
And Rolanda pulled her out of the way, would you, would you be, want Rolanda to pull your child out of the way from getting hit by a car?
Yeah, I'd like her to pull her out of the way.
You would want to do that, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't take blood from her?
I wouldn't let her blood get in my baby's body.
You wouldn't let her blood, so, so you'd let her save the baby's life in one way, but not in another way?
I wouldn't let her, I'm not letting her mix. No, that's not right. God does not believe in us mixing.
Grandpa-
How about Act 1726 says-
If he wanted us to mix, we would have been all one color in the first place.
If you watch, some of you watch The Seinfeld Show. Many of you may know Jason Alexander, who plays George on that show. He is also joining a movement, but it's a fight against racism. And he's doing it with this message from the Anti-Defamation League.
My wife and I have a son, a perfect little boy. And suddenly I looked at the world in which he'd live and was terrified. Eight crimes don't just devastate their victims. They reach past individuals to strike at the very heart of communities. The best response is to fight, to unite under the banner of decency, equality, respect. I want to give my son a better, wiser, more loving world than this one.
Wait a minute. Jerry, who is Wendy, Ashlyn's grandpa, you were telling me something about Wendy and the way Wendy grew up.
Yeah, Wendy and Lamar both here. They, they was raised in all-white counties, Dawson County, Dawsonville, Georgia.
And that's what explains every, let me tell you, I was, you know something? My family-
305, 34, Dawsonville, Georgia.
You know something, Jerry? My family was only black family. Listen, my family was only black family in my neighborhood growing up, North Carolina. I was only black who went to my school. No, I wasn't going to move. And nobody tried to kick us out. In fact, we were a wonderful neighborhood. But it didn't, but my neighbors didn't shape who I am.
Let me ask you one thing, Ro.
All right, okay, Jerry.
This thing sitting here look like one of them Three Stooges, Mo. I believe Mo's the one. That white-headed Mo.
Let me, let me ask you something, let me ask you something.
There's no difference in the races. Okay, if there's no difference in the races, why is it these black people, they dying with this sickle salinemia, and ain't none of us up there in them-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, Jerry, let me ask you something. Jerry, 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 let me ask you a question. It's my show, Jerry. Jerry, have you ever beaten up somebody just because they look different? Have you ever killed anybody because they look different? Have you ever hung anybody? It's called lynching because they look different. You can't answer that, sir?
I've done a lot of things in my lifetime.
Thank you.
To serve my white race.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm also saying this, why, why, Ro? Why is, 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 uh, this, this Three Stooges fellow sitting here?
Because you're beating up and killing people possibly. If you don't say no, we're leaving up this opposition.
No, I resigned on my own free will.
You didn't quit, you got-
I resigned on my-
One at a time, Gordon, Gordon, give him a chance to answer.
You need to do your homework.
Give him a chance to answer. Go on. Yes.
The second young man.
Yes.
I don't know if he practiced Ku Klux Klan's every day, but do you have a social life? Do you have a girlfriend?
Sure.
You do? Okay.
What do you say?
I, I have a lot to say. I'm getting, I don't know. But I, I say we can't allow the racism to divide us. That makes us weak. You talk about, you know, pride, I'm, I'm proud, I'm proud of us, but when we start letting ourselves be divided by race, sexism, and all these things, that makes us weak. You know, in the North, racism exists, not as strong in the South. The average black worker makes more than a white worker in the South, because we let racism divide us. That's why, we let sexism divide us. You talk about national socialism, we talk about Adolf Hitler. Adolf Hitler went after the working class. Adolf Hitler hurt regular people, white people, Jews, gays, everybody. Yes, he put, he put, he put people- You talk about national socialism? I'm a socialist. Socialist means we stand up for the working class.
You're a communist.
Means, means we respect each other. Means, respect each other. We fight for the working class. We can't let racist ideas hurt us. No, I can't, I can't. You talked about Malcolm X. Malcolm X said, "The oppressed people beyond the color of your skin will unite and fight against the oppressed." That's something I believe in.
Go, go.
Now, guys, do you claim to be patriotic? Do you love America?
Gordon?
Do you claim to be patriotic? Not this one. Then how could you wear, how could you wear what many Americans want in their lives? Wear that on your arm?
Let me tell you something, boy. You don't know me for a minute. Because you can't judge me. But you don't know, I got the power of three men in this house. And I'm on national TV too. You know what? I'm looking forward to that. I've always wanted that.